Okay. A call to order, the special committee of the hall meeting for Monday, May 6th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Raza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Pepper?
Here.
Chantet?
Wolf?
Here.
Safa?
Here.
Bierman?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Yazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Your?
Here.
Saran?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Thirteen present.
Right, up next is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for our broadcast and recording tonight. Item three is items to be removed, edited, changed. Do we have anything? Nope. And then we'll go right to item four, matters from the public. For items not on the agenda, is anybody here for anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay. And we'll go right into item five, presentation on firms for the Batavia Police Department's space needs analysis and master plan.
Hello, all. We'll have two firms to be presenting to you tonight. Our first firm is going to be FGMA Architects. They've done a number of facilities around the area, and I really want to just explain kind of what this process is and why we're doing it. In short, they're going to look at where our current police department facilities are at, what a modern, functional police department looks like in the year 2024 and beyond, and give us a path to get there. That's kind of what we're looking at. So they're going to be studying workflows, patterns, how people move across a building, technologies that a police department needs, and all sorts of other stuff. So like I said, we'll have two vendors tonight. Our first one is going to be FGMA, our second one will be Duberry, and they'll be presenting afterward. All of you should have a sheet in front of you where you can write down some comments or notes or kind of things that you want staff to be keeping in mind as we, as you eventually, ultimately select a vendor, but then as we negotiate with them, narrow scope, and ultimately come back to you for approval. So please use that to write down some notes. We've got pens over by Robin if we need them. And so basically, just write some thoughts down. If there's anything you want to communicate to staff, please do so. And without further ado, I'll introduce FGMA.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. Can you hear me okay? Because Holly, when I hear echo, it kind of sounds funny sometimes to me. So anyways, we're FGMA Architects. Just to give you a very quick overview, we've done a lot of police work. This is one of the things we actually specialize in, from renovations to adaptive reuse projects to new, all different sizes and shapes. We've been around for a long time, but the one thing I really wanted to emphasize is that we actually have a team that's dedicated towards public safety work, which is law enforcement, fire service, 911, and public works. Again, I'm Ray Lee. I would be the principal in charge for this job, but the most important thing was I would lead the whole development of the space needs programming. I work as a programmer. I do this a lot. I've been doing it pretty much almost exclusively since about 2000, but I've been working on law enforcement projects since 1990. I'm going to turn it over to Dave Yandell.
Thanks, Ray. So I'm Dave Yandell, I'm a principal at FGMA Architects, and I would be the project manager, kind of your primary point of contact in helping the team make sure they stay focused, stay on task, and go through the project. I've spent my entire career in the public sector, working on community-centric projects. I'm really excited about this one. We've been working with your neighbors up the street in Geneva on a similar project and recently completed St. Charles Police Station. So very familiar with this region and some of the challenges that happen in this part of the city or part of the state. With us tonight also is Louise Gualcheck. She's our project designer, extensive amount of experience in public safety and police stations. We've worked together on several projects, and I know she's going to bring an expert level of attention to this project. And lastly, wrapping up from attorney to leave, or else she would have been here tonight, is Reagan Porter. She's an interior designer on our team, is really focused on the wellness of public safety officers, police and fire, and mental wellness, and what the stress of this job means, and creating spaces that help support and heal during the course of a day. So this is a team that's dedicated to this project. These are the faces that you'll see for the duration of the project and going to bring this level of expertise and attention to the project. We've also got on our team select experts and partners, people that we've been working with over the last 30 years, and they're going to help us with the facility analysis as well as some of the safety analysis. And then also, we've added Leopardo companies to help us with cost estimating. We've done dozens of projects, or probably hundreds, with CCE. There are MEP engineers, McCleskey Engineering, to help us review the existing structural condition. Correct Electronics, who we're currently working with on the Donners Grove, Village of Donners Grove Police Department. There are safety and security experts and know everything and actually kind of author a lot of standards related to public safety standards. And so this is the team that's going to come together for this study and analysis.
Just to quickly go over a few things, we wanted to highlight some experience that we thought was directly relevant. One of the things you wanted to look at was renovating potentially right here. So we wanted to show you some historical renovation that we worked on, project that was turn of the century Swedish school that we converted into a police station. So the only thing we did was added an elevator and a stair, but otherwise, the interiors look like this, which are really unique. The floors creak and everything, but the police really like that. It's got some character. As far as like community outreach programs, you know, we actually completely renovated our gym, which was completely trashed when we saw the building, and turned it into kind of a jewel for the neighborhood where they do a lot of various outreach programs. Next is a combination village hall police station, not too unlike a city hall and police station. This is an addition and renovation. So we completely, on the police side, which is on the right, added and added an addition on it. We basically did a total renovation, including cell block areas, and just to show you some of the officer areas, they look like that. It was a gut remodel plus addition. And then last was new construction option. This is up the street or up the river in St. Charles, that was completed three years ago now. So it's basically interior spaces again, administrative areas, and again, training community room space.
So the space needs analysis, as we understand it, started over a year ago when the city asked Ray to come out and talk about this process and what are the benefits of going through this planning process. It's when we kind of first got introduced to the city of Batavia. And then when the RFP came out, we learned a little bit more about what was important to this process, and then we were able to take a tour in advance of submitting our proposal. Each of those steps are introductory to learning more about your objectives that have been really clearly outlined. The city's done a great job of really outlining what's important to you as you go through this process and through this study. For us, it's really important to get out of the box strong. We, you know, plan the work and work the plan. I know this sounds cliche, but it's really important to make sure that we get started correctly. So the project kickoff meeting does all that. It reaffirms the project goals and objectives. We start to engage with the staff, the community, and identify the questions that need to get answered. Our primary role during this project is to listen. This is our chance to help bring this information out forward so that we can help develop concepts, bring them back to you with cost information and other good information so you can make good decisions. And one of the things we also like to do, and it's been recommended, is touring other facilities. It's important sometimes to get outside of your immediate area, see what other agencies are doing, what other groups are doing. There's always lessons learned. Every police department is unique. Every kind of police station that gets built is somewhat of a bespoke solution, a custom solution. But you're also to get different viewpoints, different objectives, and start to learn things that is important to other people that might start to percolate up maybe directly or indirectly as part of the conversation.
Okay, so the first part is actually, the RFP broke it out into two phases, phase one and phase two. The first part was space needs assessment and an existing conditions review of your existing facility. These events will actually happen simultaneously. But to talk about, just to highlight, we're going to walk you through how we do this work. We actually will spend quite a bit of time with your department interviewing your staff to see how they work. We do it live. We don't believe in surveys. We really want to know. Like even in this picture, without standing there, I would have never known how long it takes them to check out the equipment in this particular station. That's what they're all in line for. We also know that you want to meet with a lot of your community partners, you know, and provide input into this project, and are there other things that we can partner on together? So these are the ones that were identified. We've actually worked for Tricom Dispatch, so we actually know them well, but the others, we'd be looking forward to that. One thing to mention, we spend a lot of time facilitating community meetings, so this isn't anything new for us, so I think this is good. You ask us to like take into account some of the applicable standards and best practices in policing. I just wanted to highlight one thing. The Illinois Department of Corrections actually uses our checklists when they're reviewing projects. So it's something we developed, and they really liked it and asked if they can borrow it. Space needs program development is basically like developing a recipe. It's a list of all your spaces. We like to compare what's existing, you know, its size, to a new recommended size to kind of give you an idea of where are the deficiencies here. So when we do this, we generate the spaces after the interviews. We review it with the police and city staff, and then we recommend coming right back to the city council for feedback. This provides an early opportunity to say like, hey, what kind of questions do you have? What kind of things, you know, do you, you know, do you need to know from this early phase on? Because it really is a good idea to kind of keep coming back instead of just having kind of a finished product at the end. So this is kind of like earlier in the process. The space needs assessment report will basically outline things like operational issues, which you asked us to do. And again, we like to spend time in your building. Otherwise, take a look at this lobby. You know, I would really hate to be a person making a police report and having everyone else hear what you're talking about. That's a privacy issue, and how do you treat your residents with dignity and respect? So it's good to see that, you know? You also asked us to talk about wellness and well-being of staff. This is something that we as a firm have been studying since 2012 and working with experts such as neuropharmacologists, aka brain doctors, in the development of our spaces. And we've implemented it in many projects, and it's really interesting to see how it works. And we're finding from our clients that they love these type of spaces for mental recovery, well-being, and just even rest. So, safety and security is another thing you want to address. FGMA actually has physical security experts on staff who have various certifications, including SEPTED, or members of like ACIS International, which is the Society for Industrial Security. So we know this. When we walk a project, we're looking for different things. So that's important for you to understand that we really get it, and how do we make sure that staff, the community, and anybody that uses here are safe.
As Ray mentioned, we're going to kind of run two parallel courses. One is kind of programmatic, and the other starts to talk about the building itself and the built environment. And so we're going to, I will personally be leading the team of consultants and other staff members through taking a look at the existing building systems, whether the structure, the exterior envelope, the roofs, as well as the systems, MEP, plumbing, data, technology, reviewing it against current building codes, current accessibility codes, identifying any deficiencies here with respect to just, you know, comfort and, you know, natural lighting and daylighting, but then also safety and security that overlays both from a programming standpoint and the way that spaces get laid out. We're going to talk about furnishings and furniture and make sure that it best supports daily practices within the facility. And likewise, programmatically as well as from a building and how things are constructed, we're looking at Kalia standards and other regulatory requirements that help to identify how spaces could be laid out. So this is in addition to building codes. There are specific codes that are dedicated to police station design, and these are things that will all kind of lay together on top of a summary. So at the end of the existing conditions review, we'll have a similar kind of summary of each of the deficiencies with recommendations, and layered on top of that is conceptual budgets. You know, FGMA Architects has experience with budgeting, but really bringing in an expert like Leopardo, who's able to kind of double-check our numbers and really track the market a little bit more closely than we are, is really beneficial in giving you guys good information. And so ultimately, at the end, we'll have this deliverable, which will be the phase one findings, the original report. And they'll have the space needs analysis, which includes a program statement and some preliminary recommendations, along with the existing conditions. And it's those existing conditions that are really key to understand before you move forward into the development of concepts.
Thanks, Dave. So once we know the information about the existing building and we know how much space we need, that's when we like to say the fun begins and we start looking at solutions and how we're going to solve the problem. So just to give you some examples, these are some site studies we worked on with another client, looking at their master, I'm sorry, looking at their municipal campus and trying to figure out how we would enlarge their police department. So we looked at different solutions in terms of whether we would keep the existing building, keep part of the existing building, or build totally new, and whether we would connect to the city hall or keep it separate. So this just gives you an idea of kind of the variety of solutions that we look at, and we do this very collaboratively with you. We bring ideas to the table, and then we listen to your ideas and move forward. Also from the space needs analysis, we'll be able to determine what site requirements are. We know we want to potentially look at a new site, so we'll be able to tell how much we would need in terms of site area, whether we're doing one story or two stories. And then we do what we call site studies or test fits. And with this, we're looking at how the building would be placed on the site, whether we can create separate, secure, and public zones, and just site access in general. So that gives us a good idea of what will be a good site that could be used for your project potentially. And then once we narrow down a lot of those site solutions, that's when we dig a little bit deeper and we start looking at some building layout diagrams. So these are, again, very preliminary. We're not looking at laying out every office, but we're looking at kind of department locations, whether we're one story or two story, how the building flows, what things go next to each other, and so on. So again, this is done very collaboratively with you. We would develop many, many solutions, and then as we move forward, we keep narrowing down until we get to what everybody agrees is the best or recommended solution. And then we move into budgeting.
Yep. So again, everybody's going to ask at the end, all right, what's all this going to cost? And so as we mentioned before, we have our own depth of experience and database, but we work very closely with Leopardo. We're partnered with them, as I mentioned earlier, on the Donners Grove, new Villa Tallon Police Station. They are also partners with us up in Geneva, and it's been invaluable for them to have kind of this skill set of bringing real cost. So their historic knowledge base, and they understand what goes into a building, really helps take a deeper dive than just a cost per square foot. And it also helps us kind of break things out, because a space is not a space is not a space. A conference room or an office has a whole different cost point than a detention cell or a holding area. So we look at the cost estimates broken down. Our cost models include kind of programmatic cost per square foot, but then the actual systems. And when we look at systems, we're looking at potentially good, better, best, whether it's a rooftop unit or an indoor air conditioning unit. We're looking at initial costs versus lifecycle costs. But a lot of times, what we do is help with prioritizing. There's always kind of a must-do, should-do, nice-to-do list of items, and so the must-do are those which might be code required or correcting deficiency that is related to accessibility, and then a should-do might be that next level of betterment. And that goes for both programmatic and systems. Indoor parking might be a night, or a should-do, indoor parking for the entire fleet would be a nice-to-do. That's just a couple of examples of options that we'll bring back to you as part of this study. Pardon me. And so ultimately, we'll wrap up phase two with these concepts, phase plans, budgets for both the existing facility and all the options developed, and we'll come back and present this as a comprehensive assessment and report back to city council.
So we covered a lot in just a few minutes, and we always wonder like, well, why would you choose us? You know? So we keep looking at this police station expertise. That's what we do. I think study expertise is nice, but consensus building is something that's really important in a project. So I really want to emphasize that we really work very hard to build consensus among all the stakeholders. And then lastly, this is a proven team that's worked together many, many times on dozens of stations. So I just wanted to also emphasize that. And with that, we're ready for any questions and comments.
Questions? Mark, start us.
Yeah, you've obviously done a lot of projects. Do you go back after a few years, do any kind of survey to show that you've actually been successful, and can you provide that data to us?
I can dig some up for you, because we have done post, like we do usually a one-year review, and then on some projects, we've gone back further. Louise and I were just at another project that's almost 10 years old, just to see what they've changed over that time. And it's interesting, all the effects of, what do you call, all the protests against police and some of those things that have happened, and the implementation of the Safety Act, and what's that caused them to do since the station being designed basically in 2010 was before all that? So we do go back and look a lot.
Yeah, I'd love to see that, just because it's great to say you've done a lot, but if it's, if all these police stations are like, well, yeah, we don't like it anymore, then that's a, that's a problem.
I think that that's something that would be even great for you to ask directly of a police department, so there's no influence on our part to do that. So we actually encourage you to actually do that, too. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to layer on, just very quickly. So obviously, trying to predict, you know, the future is some of the challenges, and maintaining a facility that's flexible, certainly rooted in good standards and best practices, but the state of Illinois itself keeps imposing additional training requirements and additional things that departments are having a hard time keeping up with. So a lot of that is reactive to things that are outside of their direct influence and, you know, other, you know, social events as well. So flexibility, as much as having a good plan and not overbuilding, being good fiscal stewards is an important step in developing a future station. Thank you.
Chris?
So I saw that one example you showed of historic building you guys worked on in Rockford. I mean, how much experience, because this is, if we're going to look at doing anything in this building, this is, seems like it's even older than the one you worked on in Rockford. I mean, how much experience do you guys have with this type of a building itself?
Well, the building in Rockford was built in the late 1890s. So it's a pretty old building, and, you know, we were the design lead on that one, and we actually first started off in is, do you want to actually impose any kind of historical standards on that one? So they actually did want to keep that because there were some grant opportunities on that level. You know, has this building been modified so much already that that would be difficult? That we'd have to do a little research on. But we've worked on a lot of old buildings, and because there's value in them. And I think Louise, you can speak to that, you know? You don't like to tear anything down.
Yeah, to a degree. Yeah, there's always, you know, challenges involved in working with an existing structure, no doubt, but when, you know, there's some inherent kind of beauty in it, it's a nice opportunity to, you know, create unique spaces, which I think was demonstrated in the Rockford station. It's not like any other station you'll find. And there's going to be some quirks to it, like Ray said, the floors squeak, but they seem to love it, and it's a fun project to do when you have something different to work with.
I noticed that you had the lead certification. How does that play in your analysis when you're going with the projects? And also, how long have you been certified in that?
I personally have been lead certified for about 15 years, once I came to FGMA Architects. And sustainability is kind of one branch underneath a tree that in our office is called resiliency. And resiliency has several different branches to it. One of this is sustainability, and that's often, you know, measured by lead and the scorecard that goes with that. But, and that's really focused on the building, making sure you've got an energy-efficient building. Obviously, renovating an existing facility is one of the most sustainable things that you can do in terms of not adding more to the waste stream. But then resiliency also includes, you know, the safety and security, the, you know, the strength in other facilities, and Ray can speak on that a little bit more. And then the kind of the third branch is well-building design, and that incorporates, you know, more about the occupants and less about the building. It's that access to natural light, good ventilation, temperature control, acoustics within a space. All of that's important when we're making recommendations for either renovation or new facility. We didn't make a specific slide for it, but it is absolutely a key part of our practice.
I think one of the things to know during a project kickoff meeting, we do ask often, every time actually, what is the community's view towards sustainability? We kind of start there. Is there a goal that we want to meet on that? I wanted to also answer, how long have we been lead credited professionals? We were one of the first. I was one of the first in the state when they still listed like, oh, here's the, you know, 50 of people or whatever. So it's been since the early 2000s. Our first, one of our police stations was the first lead gold police station in the United States, in Orland Park Police, and that was actually a conversion of an old carpet and tile warehouse into a police station. So you get, there's a lot of value, again, as Dave said, in that type of work. So how much consideration do we take into it? There are some things that are very practical, you know, the energy conservation, things like that. There's other things you have to be a little bit careful about. For example, the current version of lead right now requires for you to keep your certification. You have to write a report monthly demonstrating your energy usage and documenting that and send it to them every year, every month for five years. That's actually turned a lot of people off the lead, and they say, we'll design to it, but I don't know if we want to go through that, because a lot of times, they're hiring an engineer once a month for five years to make all these reports. So, but there's other avenues of sustainability you can head to, too. And I can talk a long time about it, but just so you know, I'd like to keep it short, because this is something that, as a firm, we're very passionate about. Every project that we do goes through an energy analysis phase very early in design, and just to see what can we do to tweak things, what can we do to make things better? So it's something that we would do, whether you ask for it or not.
Else?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to come here and present our qualifications, and we really look forward to the opportunity to work with the city of Batavia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do, I see the same planes and journeys all the time, you know, same co-defendants. We see the same people.
It's all yours, Nick.
Do I have to stand in front of the mic?
Yeah, if you would make sure to use the mic. If you can hear yourself talking in the room, you're loud enough, because this is being broadcast and recorded.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for having us here tonight to present our qualifications for the police station needs analysis. Little agenda for you for our presentation. We'll start with some introductions, a little bit about our practice, and then three things that we feel like really are differences between us and our competitors, being wellness, the way we do our programming, and the way we do our planning. So a little bit about introductions. My name is Jonathan Tolman. I am an associate principal with Duberry Architects, and with me today is Natalie Clemens. I am a co-author of the International Association Chiefs of Police Planning Guidelines. There's about 14 of us that collaborated to write that document on behalf of the International Association of Chiefs of Police. We both regularly teach classes or facilitate classes on behalf of the ICP about the design process and best practices for law enforcement design. We're regular presenters on health and wellness topics for specifically around public safety and municipal facilities. And our projects are regularly recognized throughout the industry for our designs, not by architects, but by police officers that are in the field. So quickly about our team. Our team is led by Duberry. We'll be leading all the programming and planning efforts for your project. Also on our project team is Rubinos Mesa Engineers. They'd be focused on the existing site, specifically here, and other site locations that the village may have for test fits. And then Middleton Construction Consulting, they would be in charge of doing that estimate, and we really like working with them because they provide municipalities with And we really like working with them because they provide municipalities with a full project cost, not just a construction cost. So you know every dollar that you'd be potentially spending on your future project. One of the things that Natalie passed around before I go to the next slide, it's some light reading for, during the presentation, but it's an example of the work that we do for planning of programming and planning police facilities. And I believe that we eventually did about seven site studies, I think they're in the back, for the Village of Glen Ellen. Okay? And it started with looking at their existing civic center, remodeling, doing addition, and then looking at seven outside sites. Okay. So a little bit about our national practice. Dewberry is a national, national company, 2,500 employees. We have over 100 law enforcement projects in our portfolio. Many of those are combined facilities. Many of those are LEED accredited. We actually have one net zero energy project here in the state of Illinois. That's the Countryside Municipal Complex, if that is something that the city is, is interested in. I think one of the, one of our big differentiators between our, us and our competitors is that we have in-house grant writers. The, the number on here that's important for you to know is that we've helped our clients secure over $1 billion of grant funding or state appropriations. And the last one was $1 million for the city of Countryside, just locally. So as we begin any project, we believe and we know it's very important to understand those public safety standards and guidelines that the police department operates under. Like just to use an example, Kalia versus Ileap, there are some subtle differences between the two, but it's important for us to have that conversation because that does actually affect planning. Of course, we do follow ICP, Department of Defense, anti-terrorism standards, IC 500, storm shelters. Since the building is a first responder facility, it will require a storm shelter within, within the new building or renovation of the, of the existing building. So these are just a few of the standards that we are paying attention to as we're doing the programming and planning of a new facility.
Wellness is one of the topics that we find really important in our firm. What we want to do is integrate wellness into the facility, kind of sometimes, whether you want it or not, we're going to try to put it in there. And the main reasons why is because we want to reduce the amount of post-traumatic stress syndrome that comes from their duty-induced tasks that police officers have to do. So some of them, you're probably all aware of these, and some of them are actually experiencing all things like inability to sleep, nightmares being triggered. There are things in your environment that can affect that and that can neutralize those. And so we like to put those right in the building design as we go. And this is both long-term and short-term individual instances that we plan for in the facilities. As you can see there, that graph, the suicide rate, 15 to 18% of suicide amongst police personnel is within the PTSD range, and we'd like to reduce that if possible. Another thing we'd like to do is integrate health and wellness right into the facilities. Every facility has a gym on site. We keep their physical fitness up, also their speed and agility, which helps with the training and some workforce things like overexertion or repetitive motion. Just a couple of the spaces that we wanted to show you that we do design that have wellness. And if you look in the top right corner there, top left corner, I'm sorry, you can see that is a gym that we do. We incorporate the lighting into the gym so that it helps you pace better, you respond more, you can work out longer if you have lighting in your gym. The one on the upper, I'm sorry, the one on the upper right side, that one is, to you guys, it looks like a lunchroom. I see a lot here. It's kind of a congregation of many spaces coming together because that's what it was designed to do. It was designed to keep people commingling in a facility so that they can keep in touch with each other. And then it also has a connection to the outside, but it's also along this very mundane path of a hallway. So we kind of open and compress and open up. On the bottom left, you can see that's a break room. This one's on elevated. We're using the roof surface to create these spaces here, again, bringing in plant life and open air into the facility. Again, that just brings their calm, gentle nature more back into their life, settles them a bit more. If they need space on their own, they cannot decompress with other people around. We do do these personalized, smaller rooms that they can have decompression in on site. We do this all during the programming phase of the project. So what we really want to do is work with all of your stakeholders here, including yourselves here in the room. We want to create a true partnership where we are talking all the time to each other. One of the first things we'll do is create something called critical success factors, which is basically goals that every department kind of sets. And we, we will go back to them periodically through the project to make sure that we are hitting them. We meet with you regularly. And while we meet with you, we know a lot of people are left-brained or right-brained. Some people like charts and others like plans. So we like to present the information in both ways so that we can get all of the institutional knowledge you have about your facilities onto our paper and in our drawings so that you have the right outcome at the end. We take those graphs and charts and figures and we put, we work on some adjacencies. That's what you're seeing here. This is kind of just where the divisions fall together in color format, just how close they need to be to each other. We also do something, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit later, called day in the life exercise. This is really just to make sure that workflow is right and the efficiency is right. There's things like, if we can make a building that is, makes your officer 10% more efficient, that's 10% more he's giving back to the community. And so it ends up being a nice workaround for everyone to have more contribution from that end. And part of this is right sizing your facility. Your facility, we want to make sure it's the right size. Sometimes people are like, well, you're going to make my office too small, or I need a bigger office. We're going to plan you for the correct size for not only today, but in 10 and 20 years when you expand a little bit. It's going to be, the facility is going to be right. We're going to take the sizes that maybe are oversized rooms, we're going to bring it down to the right size. We're going to relocate that square footage somewhere else because in construction, square footage is money. So that money is going somewhere else that we can use it more appropriately. We're also going to talk about kind of some workflow benefits of if one division has to use a work conference room and the other one does too, if we can share space and share a conference room, that's a whole room that we can devote to other spaces. So we like to work through these during this programming process. And back to the day in the life. How we do this is we develop these, what we call personas. And it's basically user identities that we like to create. You can see here, we've got five listed there that we might start with, with your police station, but we will develop these individually for your police station as well. We use that to identify kind of where people go in the building, the flow, the adjacencies. And then we ultimately turn that out to use it later on in the process while we're actually laying out the building. But also when we're doing interior design, we might change interior design for areas with different personas, et cetera. It's all just how it all kind of bakes together and we keep revisiting the things over and over again. And one of the places we're going to revisit it next is in the planning.
So our, our planning process really begins after we have had, you know, four or five conversations about the program and verifying that the city and the police department are comfortable with the square foot allocated to either renovation, additions, or a new location. And then we'll conduct what we call a charrette, where we invite the police department and any stakeholder within the city to attend a charrette. And you can see in the images, there's a lot of colorful blocks that are on, laid out on top of a, a plan or a site. And this is purposefully done with getting as much feedback as possible from the city and police department to make sure that we are incorporating all ideas, all thought about how could the new police department or the renovation of the police department work within this existing facility or elsewhere. And as we're, oh, that didn't work. Sorry, there's supposed to be a little video, but that's okay. So as we're developing, as we're developing the plans, there's three, usually three or four groups, and we make sure to divide up the patrol officers and divide up the chiefs, the admins, and divide up like investigators so they're not all sitting at one table. And you get a good mix of people at each table, usually three or four groups. And each one of those tables are led by an architect like my, like myself or Natalie or one of our other public safety design experts within Dewberry. And we basically lead a half-day charrette where each table's coming up with three different ideas about how the building can lay out, how it can be renovated, or where an addition might possibly go if we decide to do an addition or a new site. Out of those, you know, three, four tables, you get, each team then presents out. And we make sure that us, the architects, are not the one presenting. And the reason for that is we want to hear from you. Why do you like that layout? And how did you come up with it in your own words? And then at, at the end of presenting out, then we narrow it down. Which ones do we like? Which ones do we not like? Do we like pieces of option 1A versus option 2A? And then how can we combine those together? And then once we get to that point, then we have, so we have these three concepts and then we really start narrowing it down into, all right, how can we make this facility, the concept plan incorporate sustainability, safety and security for staff within the police department, and if it's here, for the village staff as well? Is it functional? And do these things actually work well together? And then we come up with a final concept and possibly a 3D massing of what that facility could look like for, for the future. And this is, of course, is done all, all the time with the city. And at the end of the day, when we're done, Natalie had mentioned the critical success factors, and we actually use that as a scorecard. If we come back and we review it together and we say, hey, we're missing this critical success factor, we failed. We didn't do our job. We got to go back. We got to redo it and make sure that it's accounting for everything that is critical to the city and to the police department. Okay. So what are some of the benefits of, of partnering with, with our team, our national expertise? We, we do work on projects across the country, but the main hub of our public safety experts are, are located in our Elmhurst, Illinois office. We do have a high focus on officer physical and mental well-being. We have a very good balance of technical expertise with design excellence. And you get to work with the SME that's, that works with ICP regularly. I work with them almost every month. I'm, I'm talking with them and, and helping them out with, with planning guidelines, writing memos for them, teaching classes. And then, of course, management of complex projects. That's, we're not a stranger to that. We, we work on large, complex projects like yours very often. So thank you very much for allowing us to present tonight. And I would open up for questions.
Do you have data going back to some of these police departments and asking a few years down the road, hey, has this been successful? And checking to see if, if everything you thought you were doing was successful?
Data, no. I, I don't think we fully document data like you're, like you're asking, but we do have like a, after the project is constructed and built, we do have an 11th month check-in where we do go back and meet with the chiefs or if there's a new chief, which often happens with, with these types of projects, they're around just long enough for the new building and then there's a new chief. Not saying that that'll happen here, but it does happen. So just to get that feedback, understanding what they like, what they not like, that all gets incorporated into, into the next round of programming or our new clients. I should also say that we do bring the police staff and any stakeholders to facilities that we've already designed. That's also very important as part of the programming process is to really understand what they like about different facilities around the area. And they don't just have to be Dewberry projects. They can be FGM projects, Williams projects. There's, there's a few architects around the area that have some police facilities experience. So it's good to incorporate all of that into the programming.
Questions? Thanks for coming and presenting to us tonight. We will let you know.
All right. Thank you very much.
each. I think that both of these firms kind of rose to the top of the numerous responses that we, how many did we receive? Eight responses that we received. Like these two stood apart for us and they both have nice things to say about one another. We also saw on projects that wasn't necessarily the same group that ended up ultimately being the architect to design the new facility, that this is a space needs analysis. And so while they are going to do adjacencies and square footage, you, you could end up going with a different firm that will prepare the architectural drawings for any facility or renovation that you ultimately end up doing. I saw that as well, so just to keep that in mind. Dewberry is a little bit of a smaller organization and FGM are the big players in this space nationally.
So FGM submitted to Geneva and St. Charles. Did you reach out to those communities to find out what their thoughts were?
Pass it over to Eric.
Yeah, so kind of to answer your question and Alderman Ubers' question earlier, we kind of did that legwork in terms of reaching out to past clients of both of these firms to find out their level of satisfaction two, three, four years after working with these firms. Both of the firms that are being presented to you, we've heard nothing but positive reviews about. FGM has been designing police stations in the Chicagoland area for years and decades. And I've talked to police chiefs in facilities where their existing structure is still standing the test of time. There are changes in police work in terms of the needs and what different police departments may need relative to when the structure was designed years ago. But generally speaking, they're pleased with the facility and the way that it was constructed and the way the process went. That was one thing we heard specifically to Dewberry was even years after the fact, if they had questions or concerns, they would reach out to them. They've continued to be responsive, helpful, and have been a very positive firm to work with. FGM as well. I, I've heard similar things. So yes, we've done that legwork and that research, made contact with a number of different departments that have gone through this process. And that is why we're comfortable presenting these firms to you.
And just to follow up, that's kind of what I'm wondering is, you know, you've, you've actually gone up to the Geneva and the St. Charles one since FGM got done. I mean, what, what were your thoughts on their spaces before? I don't know if you saw it before, but...
So Geneva is in process now. They do not have a new facility there and they very, they're probably six months ahead of the city of Batavia right now.
Okay.
So they have, there's no shovel in the ground in Geneva yet, but they are moving forward with FGM is my understanding. St. Charles Police Department is beautiful. The flow, the spaces that they have and the, just the overall structure, it's very well-designed for efficiency and for flow, for officers to be able to do their job in the most efficient manner possible and incorporate all of the newest technologies.
Well, also something that I really like about it is it feels very welcoming to the community when you walk through the front door. You have people to engage with. Right to your left is a huge training room that has, you know, glass windows in it that they invite community groups to come in and utilize. So that too is a great aspect of the design up there in St. Charles.
And we did also as a group tour the Glen Ellen, Glen Ellen facility, which was built... built by Dewberry. Again, they had nothing but positive things to say about the work they've done.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just note quickly that, I mean, I've worked indirectly with both of these firms. It's, it's really a Mercedes or Lexus here. I mean, they're both really good companies that you can't really go wrong. And to your point and what I thought about when I was going through all this, I'm like, wait a minute, they're not even doing the design. So, you know, I guess there were minor different aspects to how they would, you know, approach it, but, I mean, for me, my gut goes to FGM just because this is like, this is what they do. I mean, Dewberry's got some other arms to their business. They are smaller. Sometimes that's an advantage, but my gut went with FGM on this one.
They have either or both, I'm assuming, provided budget ranges for the space analysis yet?
Yes. So the difference between the two was about $30,000 to $40,000 was the difference between, maybe one was $110 and the other was $140. Does that sound about right?
Dewberry provided a range. So with any of these projects, the scope is going to be subject to negotiation. Dewberry said somewhere between 60 and 100, subject to negotiations. And FGM was more somewhere between, I want to say 115 to 135, somewhere in that range, I think. So it is quite a bit more than what we had originally budgeted for. And ultimately, we did look at those considerations with all the other firms, but this is a project where quality takes a higher role in staff's mind than perhaps budget alone. And so that's why we presented these two firms to you today.
And again, this is just for the space needs analysis. This isn't design, this isn't...
This is, this is the space needs analysis and ultimately a master plan. That's what this would entail. And ultimately, the full scope is subject to negotiation. So what you would be kind of giving us direction on today is go negotiate, get it settled, and then come back to you all.
I think that that's really important once we identify that and how far, how big we want to go, how much we want to make sure that we can adapt this over the next 20 or 50 years. You know, that, that's the reality of where this decision is going. You know, I doubt that they did a space needs analysis when they moved from the old city hall over to here.
Right.
You know, and that's something that's totally different today than it has really ever been. And there's so much more that's happened in the last even decade, you know, technology wise and, you know, structures even of the departments that I think plays so much more of a part in this that, I don't know that we don't know all that, but there is a lot more involved in it now.
Not to put you on the spot, but was there either one of the firms that the team was kind of leaning towards based on what you've seen and what you heard from your tours?
I think we're all a little more familiar with FGM. I've been to more of their projects. I've talked to more police leaders who have had their projects worked on. So I have a, probably a little bit greater level of comfort with them. At the end of the day, I'm comfortable with both firms. And I think either would be a good choice for this project in order to provide us, you know, a comprehensive report for where do we go from here? How does our facility work and flow now? And what is the best option to get it to the standard of a modern day police department? So I'm confident that either firm would be able to fulfill that.
I would just say for especially this piece of the project, even more so leaning towards FGM, just, just because of, you know, the analysis piece, they have a broader swath of things that they've actually done, whether it's well or not well, that they can pull from, you know, that experience. So, you know, yeah, in my mind, that's a good choice.
So all we really ask is just please write down any comments or thoughts you want us to have as we move forward in the process, similar to what we did with the, what was it, the South River Street corridor study? Provide us some feedback. We'll keep that in mind as we negotiate with whoever city council directs us to go with. And we'll ultimately come back to you with a contract to make this happen. We can expect whoever we choose, this will take the better part of the rest of the year. And so it'll likely go into the kind of October, November, December timeline regardless of which firm you chose.
So everybody's got your little sheet in front of you with notes on it or make some notes on it, make a choice, then we are turning those in. Sorry? It's all right. Hang those around that way.
Name on it?
You don't have to.
I'll put 11. Oh, and here's your note back. Thank you. You're just getting there.
A whole box for you to check. All right. Now we will move on to item six, which is a discussion on public restrooms.
Yes. As you know, we conducted an RFP for architectural services for the tin shop on North River Street. And we got those back and we really, it made us think hard because looking at some of the projects that these firms did, they put costs next to what it took to rehabilitate very old buildings or apartments within a very old building. And that we thought, you know, here, here's a million dollar project and is that really the best use of our funds to look at spending hundreds of thousands or a million dollars to put public restrooms and a very small retail space into the, the tin shop? At the same time, out of the blue, no pun intended, Scott Buening received a cold call email from a company located in Montreal, Canada that has prefab restrooms, which are self-cleaning, nearly indestructible from a vandalism and graffiti standpoint.
Hasn't been here in Batavia yet though.
Hasn't been in Chicago yet.
So, so the story was, the, one of the cities where this, this was installed had an individual who was known for trashing public spaces. And what was the first thing he took into the, he took a baseball bat inside and all that they had to do was touch up the paint in there. The concrete, the, the sink and the toilet in there are made of concrete. It looks all like it's porcelain, but it's not. And the next time the individual, after he was released from jail, he, the second thing he did was push a sofa and some other furniture in there and light it on fire. And that too, it took cosmetic cleaning because the interior, the, it is six inch concrete walls covered in industrial grade steel and then, you know, a, a paint on there that is graffiti proof. They also treat it with microbial substance and that you need to redo on like an annual basis because the, the periodic cleaning that it self cleans eventually wears that off. And so you have to have that redone. But at the end of the day, and it's, it's built on a concrete pad. And so one of the benefits of this type of public restroom is that you could move it anywhere you wanted to in the future. You just hire a rigging company and, and move it where it's needed next. So for instance, if city council decided that the place for this public restroom was the current location of the tin shop, but in the future, we had a development project come that wanted to utilize that space, we could just pick that up and move it to a new location in the future. The company has been in existence for about 30 years. Is that right, Scott? And so they have many examples of this in the, in Canada. The installations here in the United States are, you know, nowhere near as many as they have up in Canada. But we thought it was an interesting idea that seemed like it was very cost effective. A single is $195,000 and a double is $295,000. And amongst the things that I sent to you today is included cost of ownership, which would be significantly less than building a traditional style public restroom, similar to the ones that I showed you that had been built up in St. Charles. So I just wanted to ask if this is something that you want us to pursue further. Oh, also, I think I included, there's a 16 week lead time on delivery. So it's something that we could probably get before the end of the year.
I want to go find one.
I want to video it.
We could all go to Montreal. I would be okay with that.
We've offered the Montreal trip to go up there.
Anyone volunteer for the Montreal trip?
Take it, take one for the team.
In all seriousness, I'd be interested to see how it might withstand some tornado type weather. Cause I mean, from the way that you're describing it, if it's made with this concrete heavy material, like would that be a refuge for tornadoes?
It could possibly be. I would be happy to get you the weight of it. It seems, because you do need a crane to set this in place, I think it is substantial enough that it could be. It's also so programmable that the restroom itself is sending people alerts when it needs additional soap, when it needs additional paper, if anything mechanical goes wrong with it. You set the times that it opens, the times that it closes. It has sensors inside that know what its volume should be when empty. And so it can detect that there's still a person in there. It will also detect if a person is in there longer than 20 minutes and will call the police department and say, somebody has been in the restroom for 20 minutes. Because one of the things that they have found in other locations, Portland is one of the locations where, has these and they have high drug use. And so it's, you know, unfortunate that some people pass away, right? So this, if the person has been in there for 20 minutes, that's why the police are notified of that. So perhaps they could render assistance or, yeah.
You put solar panels on the top of it?
Yeah, you think you could, you could, they, they had green roof examples. So, I mean, you could do that. You probably could put solar panels on there if you wanted to.
Sure.
I know that they had one that's installed in Texas and I think that that was also considered tornado resistant, you know, by their building codes in Texas, if I remember correctly.
Is that all in pricing? Like it's on the ground here, 250 or whatever it was, 290?
Delivery is not included just because the logistics of that are so different for, for different locations.
And likely very expensive if it's prefab.
But it is the all in price. And I asked, the 195 also includes having the bottle filler on the outside of it as well. So water bottle filler would be included.
Where's that water coming from?
It's going to be hooked up to City Electric and City Water.
Oh, well, okay.
No, it's not where you're thinking, what you were going to say. It's not coming from that part. No, no, no. Another cycle of water.
It's got its own wastewater plant inside.
Interesting idea. I'd like to know where one is, the closest one to us is.
Colorado.
Colorado right now is the closest right now, but they are building one in Louisville. It's not done yet, but they're, they are going to be building one, I think in the next four or five months, I think is what the plan was. So. It might've been Greeley.
There are multiple choices for what you can have on the outside of it and some jurisdictions have chosen to have mural, you know, the, the sheets that you can stick onto the outside. Did you have a question?
Um, no, I found the website online. They're beautiful.
They are.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be wonderful to have in our town and especially the self-cleaning aspect. They had something very similar to this and trying to figure out if it's the same exact thing when we were in Spain. And it was fantastic and had like a buzzer and let you know, like there, that someone was in there and what phase of the experience they were in. It's like, oh, they're drying their hands. They'll be out soon.
The only drawback was that we talked about in their, their demo that they were giving us online was that the, the trigger for the toilet to flush and clean is the door opening. And we said, oh, here in America, if the, if it's still flushing when you open the door, it indicates that you may have failed to wash your hands. You know, it takes a while for people to get used to the operation. Like for instance, you'll notice that the commode has no seat on it. And the company says, the seats on public toilets in, in this kind of area last about three hours. It's just, you know, we're trying to make something that's going to stand the test of time and be very minimal requirement for somebody to be managing this. Yeah.
There's, there's also an option to get a button to actually flush if you want to do that. So that's an option.
Yeah.
It'll also give you statistics on whether or not you've washed your hands too. It says it'll, it'll, it'll tell you, you know, how many people, how many flushes have happened, how many people have actually washed their hands and that, and that's all. That is, yeah, a lot of data.
It's got Bluetooth.
It's, yeah, I think it's some kind of wifi connection.
Alderman, paper?
I was going to ask, I don't know if I noticed it in here, does it have anything for like a baby's changing station?
You can get that, yes.
Yes.
All right. Also, it, it looks like for its amenities, like the soap dispenser and all that stuff, they provide those resources. We do have to purchase through them or could we?
No, as a matter of fact, one of the things that they said in their presentation was you can put whoever your provider is for hand soap, you can put that in there. Whoever your provider is for toilet paper, you can put that into. It's just a specialized system where the, the paper is dispensed sort of like that couple sheets at a time.
Four squares.
Yes.
I just liked the rigging picture that they have in there.
Yeah. It's amazing. I'm sorry.
I, I mean, don't want to harp on these guys at all. I mean, all the power to them, but have we looked to see if they have any competition here in America?
I think we did and I couldn't find any.
Not with this kind of a project that's basically vandal proof. I mean, they're, they're pretty unique. I mean, this is, this, I was frankly shocked. I normally completely ignore advertising emails and I just don't respond, but I pop this one open and I kind of looked at it like, actually this looks kind of interesting.
Cause even though it's, you know, yes, I think cost effective in a, in a sense, it's still 200 grand for a bathroom, you know? And so I know a guy building a house in Walnut Creek, California for 400 grand right now. You know, so I was like, wait a minute.
But then we look at how much it costs to, when we were doing remodeling and we knew we were going to not have water sometimes, we looked into a mobile public restroom, outrageously expensive to lease. I was amazed.
Yep.
We will continue to look at that and bring that to you as a decision. Should we move forward? Do you have any preference as to location? Do you want to look at putting it where the tin shop is now because that's located right next door to the information place for the farmer's market?
Is it the whole idea to try and get it more downtown where more people are at down here?
Initially, we thought because of everything that's going on, on North River Street, that is where Main Street suggested that they would like to see it. And the Park District did not seem very interested in having it near Houston Street.
And I think it's good there because it's a direct shot across the bridge, on the pedestrian bridge. And really a turning point for bikes, people, and so much happens there and the farmer's market's going to be happening at night, once a week.
And we could direct with signage on this side to say a public restroom is available on the other side of the walking bridge.
Yep. That could be one of the things that's in the kiosks that are around is...
Didn't the Park District ask us to build a bathroom for them and they don't?
So we brought the idea to them and they said...
Some will be more than happy to fix the fountain if they sell us the red brick building.
That was another thing that was in the budget, they wanted a bathroom.
So are we giving up? What created this whole bathroom talk? We're giving up on the tin shed then, like existing?
This idea, well, it would be giving up on this idea for the tin shop. We would be, in terms of public restrooms, we would be pursuing this idea separately. We're going to have to at some point decide what we want to do with the tin shop because it is really in a horrible condition at this point. I don't, I don't know, like I said, the rehabilitation of that is going to take a lot. Alderman back?
Have we marketed it much or looked into? We've got a great consultant now that might be able to help with funds to get it rehabbed?
There's a couple of options we can consider for it. I mean, we could, you know, try and, you know, sell it. We could try and, you know, use that parcel as part of a larger redevelopment and then say, look, you know, we're going to make the building available to dismantle or move, you know, as, as an option, if that's something we want to consider. Obviously demolition is, is an option, but you know, if we don't want to go that route then that's, you know, that's obviously, you know, council decision. But so, you know, we could, we, you know, we had interest in the past from a couple of people who wanted to use it, but again, the renovation and costs of it, you know, we're finding are just going to be very expensive, unfortunately, so.
And the moving cost, there was somebody who was interested in exploring the idea of moving the building and they found that the moving of the building was cost prohibitive too.
When you say you want to put the bathrooms at the tin shed, do you mean replace the tin shed with these bathrooms though?
As a possibility, yeah. But we could look at other locations as well.
Probably five years ago, we had two or three of the local carpenters go into that building and take a look at it. And every one of them said, this thing needs to come down. This is in really, really bad shape. It wasn't built very well to begin with. And the fact that it has, after all these years, it has no plumbing in it at all, that it really leaves a lot to be desired as far as a building and it should come down. And there's, you know, I think North River Street has some dynamic opportunities. Specifically, there's some other stuff waiting up the street there that I think could turn into some really neat stuff. And the city over the years has invested on buying much of the River Street frontage from Spring Street going north. There's, we already bought and tore down a house, the first house on the corner. There's two more right north of it that are in pretty rough shape. And I would think the day's coming when they're going to have to come down. And then you get up, you're across the street from the challenge. And the challenge is a very interesting building because it by itself has one of the most dynamic views of the Fox River. And I have had several people call and want to know who they could talk to about buying that and would the city entertain a redevelopment of it? And I, you know, it's a pretty involved, complicated story. The gentleman that owns the challenge at the moment is over 80 years of age and I don't believe he has any children. So I would think there's an opportunity for some more stuff to happen there in the near term. I just think by doing this and putting that restroom there, getting rid of that building that is, nobody can use it right now for all intents and purposes, it would be a first step forward in kind of further redevelopment of North River Street.
I think I've heard positive feedback and so we'll come back for another discussion about, think about where you might want that to be located.
Do they have facade options?
Yes.
Because of limestone?
Mm-hmm.
Could be option here.
They have masonry options for you to do, so.
And maybe Gary could answer this. How available or how simple will it be to get to the utilities in that spot?
Easy. They're already there.
They're right there?
Yeah. They already have water, sewer and electric to that building.
To that building, okay. Okay. So that'll be easy. Big slab of concrete for it to sit on.
It comes with one.
You don't need to park one.
No, you just need to grade it.
What, you just need the gravel bed for it and then just set it on it?
Yeah.
Interesting.
It's that easy?
It is very interesting. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Item seven, which is others. Does anybody have any others tonight? Okay. No, not yet. I'm running this one. I know you are. I'm just doing it. We now need to mostly go into executive session for litigation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.